I want to extend a warm welcome to this town hall meeting. It's great to see so many Huskies here today. My name is Lou Krueger, and I'm Chair of the Senate Agenda Committee. That's the Executive Committee of the Faculty Senate. And I'm going to make a few brief remarks and then introduce the President. Northeastern University has been on Huntington Avenue for more than 100 years, but it has never been as successful as it is today. Our hearts are bursting with pride. We have a record number of applicants. Our co-ops span the globe, and our research has won international accolades. Northeastern is rapidly becoming a major player on the world stage. Despite these and many other accomplishments, this is no time to relax. Both the opportunities and the pressures are enormous. We must continue to secure funding to support excellence in research, provide an educational experience that is demonstrably better than what our competitors offer, and leverage and effectively communicate our unique advantages. As President Aoun and Provost Director have reminded us, mediocrity is not an option. Forget about the courier and knives seen of a bucolic college campus. Northeastern is a results-oriented 21st century powerhouse of a university in the center of one of the most important cities in the world. Like many successful multinational corporations, universities need to be fleet-footed to keep ahead of the unrelenting pace of global competition. Faculty senates have been faulted at times for impeding efficiency. The criticisms are often whispered, but nonetheless well-known. Senates are only interested in long-winded debates. They are populated by the same gray-haired men year after year. Well, the gray hair part of that stereotype might be true for some of us. And senates are more interested in protecting worn-out precedents than meeting the challenges of tomorrow. I am pleased to inform you that Northeastern University's faculty senate suffers from none of these maladies. Unlike the United States Congress, our senate has term limits. Only six of the current 40 members were senators a mere five years ago. For more than 20 years, our university has been on a rocket ride to ever greater heights. The senate and administration have been co-pilots on every foot of that journey. Our senate has not only endorsed change, but on many occasions has advocated for radical departures from past practices. Senates help ensure that faculty expertise is brought to bear on complex university decisions. The former president of Harvard, Derek Bauch, once said, and I quote, "Looking back over the checkered history of commercial activities on campuses, one can much more easily point to examples of commercial activities of unilateral decisions than to vulnerable valuable opportunities lost through inordinate faculty delays." Unquote. Indeed, most world-class universities have a strong model of shared governance. However, in an ironic twist, some universities have decided to emulate the command and control approach of conservative corporations, whereas many of the most forward-looking companies, such as Google for one, are adopting university practices. Respecting and empowering individuals does not mean sacrificing the bottom line. Well-run organizations value participatory decision-making while still being able to capitalize on opportunities. Therefore, one of the Senate Agenda Committee's priorities for this academic year will be to work with the administration on strengthening our shared vision of university governance. Our other priorities include examining how Northeastern can enhance its ability to recruit, retain, and advance members from diverse backgrounds; supporting the implementation of policies and procedures that help faculty achieve an appropriate balance between work and home life; examining the status, roles, rights, and responsibilities of our non-tenure-track faculty; collaborating with the administration for the purpose of evaluating the implementation and initial outcomes of the new hybrid budget system; continuing to emphasize strategies for enhancing students' educational experience; and finally, collaborating with the student government associations on updating our academic honesty policy for students and promoting the affordability of textbooks. Rapid change in global competition pose real threats to our collegial approach to governance and our sense of community as a university. These pressures can either balkanize us or bring us closer together. Problems are opportunities. We are more than capable of rising to the occasion and having a model of shared governance that is responsive to the challenges of both the present and future while preserving our values of an academy of higher learning. We have always had the good judgment to reject both rule by fiat and indecision. May we continue to have the wisdom to find our way between these extremes and blaze a path to enduring achievements that is broad enough for all of us to travel on. If we can accomplish that, then perhaps even 100 years hence, when staff, students, faculty, and administrators gather in the autumn, their hearts will be bursting with pride too. At this point in time, it's my considerable pleasure to introduce the President of Northeastern University, Joseph Faucon.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. And Lou, thank you. As you all know, Lou is finishing his term as president, and that's his second term. Let's give him a round of applause and thank him. Also, let me mention that I really would like to commend Alex McRaeanes. For him, Boston lives in an eternal spring, and he has his Hawaiian shirt. So Alex, thank you for reminding us that the weather is perfect here in Lake Wobegon. Thank you. Let me give you a brief summary of the state of the university. As you heard from my colleague Lou, we're doing extremely well. You know, every indicator is positive, is going up. And what I would like to do is maybe take a couple of minutes first to remind us what we have done, especially in this context where people were retrenching. And when, you know, in a period of retrenchments, there is angst, there is also questioning, and many other institutions were questioning their models, whereas we committed to ours. And when they were laying off their human talent, we decided to recruit. We recruited so far 261 faculty. Many of them are here today. If you are new, please raise your hand, faculty and staff, please raise your hand. And we welcome you to our community, and I also would like to welcome Terry Fulmer, who, the new dean of the School of Bouvet, Bouvet School of Health Sciences. Terry, why don't you stand and be recognized here? So, we recruited 261 faculty, and last year alone, we recruited 60 faculty. I believe that you have this issue of the voice. Please keep it next to your bed. We strengthened the disciplines, and we went for interdisciplinary hires. One cannot be conceived without the others. If we want to talk about interdisciplinary research, we have to be strong in the disciplines, and we have to look at new venues and new emerging opportunities. Also, when others were reducing their research, we expanded our own research footprint. We did it here on campus, and we did it in Burlington. I'll come back to that later on. But in so doing, we said that we want to align with the national priorities, and you know what they are: health, security, sustainability. We said that in these domains, we're going to make bets. We're going to innovate, we're going to be entrepreneurial. And we took our message not only to other universities, we recruited from the competitors, but also we took it to Washington, and many of us have been very involved in Washington. Also, when others were shrinking their offerings, we enriched them. We introduced a four-year co-op option along the five-year co-op option. We did it because our students were saying, "We want the options. We cannot afford to be only basing all our curriculum on one approach. We had to diversify." And at the same time, we didn't want the students to shortchange what makes us special co-op. That's why you have to have the options. We are shifting from a faculty-centered curriculum to a student-centered curriculum. What does it mean? It means that we're giving our students choices. You recall that some people said, "Ah, we're moving away from co-op. We're not moving away from co-op. We will never move away from co-op." That's our signature. That's our differentiation. Quite the opposite, we doubled our investments in co-op. We took it globally, and as a matter of fact, you know, this summer, when I was in India, when I was in Asia, I met our students, whether they're in Hubli, whether they're in Singapore, they're all over the world, and they love it. And we need to do more of that. We are now in 85 countries, as you know, in terms of experiential, but that's only the beginning. I don't think it's enough. It's not the question of having our students in 85 countries only. And I, you know, my colleagues keep telling me, you know, the number is changing, it's increasing. That's good. But we need also to have more students avail themselves to and explore the world. Also, when, we live in a period of retrenchment in the society as a whole. You know, you referred, Lou referred to Washington, but let me refer also to what's happening with the middle class. The middle class is really being challenged. And here, what we did, and this is something I want you to keep in mind, because not many of you may be aware of that, and you need to not only know it, but spread the word about that. Over the last five years, on average, our tuition increased by 3.9%. Our financial aid increased by 8.9%. So the rate of increase of financial aid is double the rate of increase of our tuition. I want you to keep that in mind. And today, we are giving $160 million in financial aid to our students, 160. In addition, we reaffirmed and launched, as you remember, two years ago, and we reaffirmed it throughout, what we call the Northeastern Promise, namely, all our students are given a financial aid package for four years. Few institutions do it. We are doing it. And in addition, we are saying that if your financial situation changes, if your financial situation changes at home, we are here, ready to work with you and help you. Now, if you ask me, how were we able to do that, to increase this financial aid so dramatically? We raised money. You know, fundraising, and I'll come back to that, has focused also on scholarship and student aid, in addition to other dimensions that you know about, such as endowed shares, such as the investment in the Costas Institute, here, Peter. So, what are the results? Lou mentioned that we have received the largest number of applications in the country of any private university. Why is it the case? Because our model is compelling. Students are getting jobs. Students are going to graduate schools. Students are staying for a master's, but it's working. After nine months of graduation, 90% of our students have jobs, and we have been consistently recognized as one of the best institutions in the country for job placement. Our model is compelling, and that's why the students are here. In terms of research, the other day, I was talking to some new faculty, and they told me, you know, "It seems that Northeastern has increased dramatically in terms of the undergraduate parameters, metrics, whatever you say. What about research?" You all know that when we look at funded research, we doubled over the last five years our funded research. In a climate that is, what, that was challenging, and that is challenging. We are now, you know, we raise every year $95 million from agencies in Washington to support our research. So we doubled that, and we cannot stop. We have to do more. I mentioned fundraising. Fundraising has been key. The historical average of our university, the recent historical average, was 18. We took it to 40, and last year, we had the best year ever. We raised $53 million. This is remarkable in a period of retrenchment. And why? It's very simple. The story is compelling. Success breeds success. People don't give you, don't invest in you, don't give you money because you need it, but because they're excited about your ideas, about your big vision. And that's exactly what happened with the Costas Institute. It's as simple as that. We are opening alumni chapters all over the world. I was in Hong Kong and Singapore to open some, and I want to commend my colleagues for doing that. Now, some of you keep asking me every year, "Where are we in terms of SATs?" If you don't know it by now, I'm sure that you all know it. You know, we have a very selective student body. Students attract students. Faculty attract students. The community attracts students, and the average SATs are around 1341. Yes, it will put us, you know, with respect to the traditional competitors, ahead of them. You know, people who are close to us here, you know, and the two institutions that have a name that starts with B. You know, you ask me every year about that, that's my report. So let me give you a little bit about what I think about the external context. The situation in Washington is very challenging. We are expecting retrenchment in terms of financial aid, in terms of support for research. However, we feel that our model of research that is user-inspired, that is focusing on the national priorities, is very relevant. As a matter of fact, I and my colleagues, the Vice Provost for Research, and Tim Leishen, and Mike Armine, et cetera, we had a meeting last week or 10 days ago with Janet Napolitano at Homeland Security. This is the kind of research that they value. I see Peter here, the new co-director of the Costas Institute. Peter, we expect a lot from you. So, it's great to have you as part of our community, and I know that your co-director is in Washington also working on our behalf as we speak. So, welcome to this community. And Peter, why don't you stand? Let's recognize him here. Thank you. So, there is, Washington is worrisome. The second aspect is that what makes me worried is the fact that public institutions are retrenching. It's not good for the nation. 80% of the students go to public institutions. But beyond that, let me tell you a little bit how they are responding. They are privatizing. When I mention that, people are surprised. "What do you mean by that?" Well, traditionally, you know, that public institutions focus on recruiting students from the state. That's their charter. What is happening now is that they are extremely challenged because the states don't have, individual states don't have enough money to support them. Well, what are they doing? They are going after out-of-state students and international students. That's the meaning of privatizing. They're changing their charters implicitly. What's the impact? The impact is our competition is increasing and not decreasing. When you look at what's happening in the world, we were, the Provost and I were in India, I just came back from Asia, and you see an enormous investment in higher education. We cannot take for granted the fact that we have the premier system in the world. The world has noticed, and the world is not copying us, is taking the elements that make sense, but they are looking at it from their own perspective. And it so happens that their perspective, in fact, intersects enormously with ours. We talk about experiential learning. We talk about co-op. They are very interested in that. Wherever we go, this is an issue that is, that attracts attention. They want to know what, how we're doing it. They want to emulate that. Here, we talk in terms of research, we say, "Our model here is distinctive because we focus on user-inspired research. We focus on the fact that we don't create a dichotomy or hierarchy between fundamental and applied research." For them, it goes without saying that they need it along these dimensions. So what makes us distinctive is the model that they are espousing, and they have means to do it. We are also seeing signs where partnerships are happening and bypassing the United States. It's not only Europe. Asia is doing that. Korea, China, Japan, et cetera, they have agreements, transfer agreements, partnerships in terms of research. We are the premier system in the world, but we cannot take it for granted. And frankly, the competition is not taking it for granted. So what are we seeing? We are seeing many activities, and those activities can be summed up in one way. There is a decoupling of the brand and the manifestation of the brand. What does it mean? It means that traditionally, when you thought about, for instance, Stanford, to give a remote example, Stanford was in Palo Alto, whereas now, Stanford is going to have multiple manifestations. I could have taken another example. Now, this is something we need to explore. We need to have, to look at possibilities of multiple manifestations virtually and physically. This is something we're exploring. We, as you know, we have been discussing that, and we'll discuss that more with the community, with all of us, and, but we cannot stay, stand still here. Yes, we have been extremely successful, but we have to continue to innovate. So stay tuned, because we need to engage ourselves in a discussion about the next steps in terms of our strategies. So keep that in mind. There is a clear decoupling between the brand and the manifestation of the brand. Now, Northeastern is not laggard here. Some people said, you know, "Are we behind the curve?" No. For instance, the business school has been pioneering programs with various institutions, with various corporations, with IBM, for instance. Instead of, IBM decided that it wasn't possible for them to send their executives to campuses because they lose them. Well, our business school was very innovative. It said, "We are going to go to you." They launched something called the High Tech MBA, and it's delivered online on-site to IBM America. It was so successful that IBM America said, you know, "Why don't you do IBM India? Would you accept to do that?" They said yes. Then IBM China, then IBM Philippine. So you see, we're global. We are so global that wherever, wherever we go and we meet people, they know, not only Northeastern, that's a given, but they know specific leaders. You know, on a small note, the Provost and I met with the head of the Public Health Foundation in India. When we walked in, he said, "Oh, I know Northeastern well, and I know, more importantly, the Gdennat. We have been working together on that. You are our ambassadors. Wherever you go, the students, the faculty, the staff, you are our ambassadors. You are opening doors for us. Please do, continue to do that." That's a great story. So let's look at the future. Our university initiative, faculty recruitment initiative, is not going to stop. You know, we committed to recruit 300 faculty, 100 faculty replacement, and 100 faculty new, 150 faculty new, 150, 150, I'm sorry. Now, last year, our community here decided to recognize university professors, distinguished professors, as being role models for the whole community. And every year, they will select other university professors and other distinguished professors. Those professors, those colleagues are role models because they pioneered fields, they impacted fields. They created new opportunities that didn't exist before, new ways of looking at the world. And it is time now to use this opportunity to attract, in addition, 12 faculty over the next two years, who we will be target of opportunities, will be like the role models, will be recruited by all of us, to be university professors, to be distinguished professors. They will pioneer new fields. They will impact existing fields. They will do what you have been doing. In terms of research, I mentioned that we doubled our research. I mentioned that we aligned ourselves with the national priorities. I mentioned the Costas Institute and the co-directors here with us. I mentioned, you know, the dean, Dean Luzzi, is going to be in charge also of the security initiative, working with Mel Bernstein and the Provost. So this is a burgeoning field for us. We have considerable strength, but it's only the beginning. We need to focus on that. We need to make it a reality, not only in Burlington, but for the nation. You all mentioned to me, and I mentioned wherever I go, the Northeastern advantage. Our students have a clear advantage because of our co-op model, because of our experiential learning. And co-op is powerful, not because it gets the students, our students, jobs only, it does that, but it's powerful because it's a powerful learning model, the integration of classroom experience and co-op experience. It is time now, when we are at the peak, to look at our Northeastern advantage, to look at our curriculum. Do we have flexibility? What does it mean, more importantly, go beyond the curriculum? What does it mean to have a Northeastern education? When I look at our students, when I meet with our students, when I meet with our alumni, there are certain characteristics that come to the fore. They are multifaceted, they are entrepreneurial, they are nimble, and they are global. Is our curriculum reflecting those attributes? Are we ready to go back to what Lou said for the 21st century? Are we ready to look at opportunities that we haven't explored yet? So we're going to have this dialogue this year with the community again on the Northeastern advantage, and more importantly, I don't want you to focus only on the curriculum. I don't want you to focus on co-op only. I don't want you to focus only on the integration, but focus on the major question, what does it mean to have a Northeastern education? it mean to have a Northeastern education? Faculty initiative, research, the Northeastern advantage, the master plan. Now, some of you don't know what the master plan is, and I have to confess, when I came back from California, I didn't know what the master plan is. So for my colleagues who don't know what the master plan is, there are two aspects of the master plan. One is an aspect that is driven by the city. The city says, in order for you to expand or to be, you know, over the next 10 years, you have to tell us what your aspirations are. But, you know, this exercise about the master plan is really very confined, restricted. We are global. We are also in the hunt, we are in Burlington, we are in Dedham. We cannot restrict ourselves to looking at the master plan only in from euros. So the master plan is something that we are going to drive. We're not going to be driven by any entity. And the master plan is a way to look at our institutions, at our institution and our footprint all over the world and say, what do we want to do? What do we want to be 10 years from now? That's a major question. And I have asked Ralph Martin, who is here, Ralph, could you stand? And you all know Ralph. He is the Senior VP and General Counsel to lead it. And we will have extensive discussions, meetings throughout the year, on campus. Those will be meetings for us, for our community. We will go and meet with other communities, with the politicians, et cetera, later on. But first of all, we have to define our own aspirations. We cannot let anyone define ours. And finally, the campaign. We're going to prepare a campaign this year. Yes, I know what you're thinking. How can he talk about a campaign in a period of retrenchment? As I mentioned earlier, our story is compelling. People are excited to be part of this community. The alumni are energized and are excited. People give to big ideas. They don't give to small ideas. They don't give to people who need to fill a gap. And we feel that our new system of hybrid management is empowering the schools and the deans in the schools to have a case for the campaign where they are articulating their vision, their aspirations, and their big ideas. The campaign is a campaign that will involve everybody, faculty, staff, students. But first and foremost, give us your big ideas because that's what attracts the donors. They are investing in you. Let me stop now because I'll come back and let me introduce my colleague, the Provost, who has been doing a phenomenal job moving this agenda forward. And presumably, he must be looking at his watch, saying he went two minutes beyond his allocated time. Do I have to cut my speech? And the answer is no.
Thanks, Joseph. Sometime I'll have to talk to you about orders of magnitude. But anyway, good afternoon. It's a pleasure for me to be here and have the opportunity to address you. And what I'd like to do is focus on three of the aspects of what the president talked about and try and fill in a little bit more detail. This is in the areas of research, faculty hiring, and undergraduate programs. Clearly, as you've heard both from Lou and from the president, our research has been growing at a tremendous rate, but it also has the opportunity to continue to grow. We're hiring new faculty and our current faculty also are enhancing their own research programs. And in order to encourage our faculty to engage in bigger programs, center-level programs, multi-investigator programs, that are going to be needed to address the important areas that we find challenging, the so-called areas that we refer to as use-inspired research. Last year, the Senior Vice Provost for Research, Mel Bernstein, launched a seed funding program, and we invested $1.4 million in 24 projects. We will be announcing another round of competitions in November to, again, to encourage faculty to start thinking about how to go after much larger external funding, having first demonstrated an ability to get its position to win in those competitions. But in order to have true impact on society, we need to transfer, be much better at transferring the results that we get in the laboratory out into society. And towards this end, at last year's town hall meeting, we announced a new initiative, the so-called Innovation Initiative. And you'll be hearing a lot more about that in the weeks to come, but because we've been most fortunate that two of our successful entrepreneurial alumni, Rich DeMore and Alan McKim, have provided funding for this initiative, we've, both to the university and to the College of Business, we've been able to establish the Center for Research Innovation. The mission of this center is to grow a university-wide ecosystem that encourages and fosters innovation and entrepreneurship amongst our faculty, amongst our students and our staff. The center is helping to coordinate a number of activities, and again, you'll be hearing more about these. Among these are sponsoring cross-college venture creation classes that teach entrepreneurial skills to our students, a forum for potential entrepreneurs to vet and discuss concepts that might lead to new companies, and to facilitate the development of concepts, these concepts into viable startups. The CRI, so the Center for Research Innovation, is also investigating the creation of a seed fund to support company startups that will grow out of faculty research, and also investigating the establishment of a business development service program that will help facilitate these startups. Faculty are clearly the backbone of the university. It's the faculty that develop our educational programs. They're the ones that conduct the research. They certainly, their reputation is really what the university's reputation is built upon. And as the president and Lou has mentioned, we've had great success in hiring faculty. And this year, or last year actually, we launched 70 searches for tenure, tenure-track faculty. 60 faculty were hired, including 21 in brand-new tenure-track lines. This year, we're launching 75, more than 75 searches, which will include 30 new tenure, tenure-track lines. This is, as near as we can tell, the most ambitious hiring program that this university has ever undertaken. We know that faculty recruit faculty. We know that it's a tremendous amount of work to recruit faculty. So first of all, I want to thank all of the faculty that have engaged, been engaged in hiring this past year, and I'm thanking in advance all of you that are going to be engaged in the coming year because it does take a lot of work. We certainly can be proud of the high-quality faculty that are, that we're able to attract to our university, and it certainly is a testament to everything that we've been striving to achieve. But there's still room to do even better, and as the president mentioned, in addition to these 75 searches, we're going to start a new hiring program that is aimed at filling 12 new tenure-track lines over the next two years. And these are focused specifically at very, very high-quality, high-impact faculty, faculty that have shaped new fields of inquiry, faculty that are recognized for having had significant impact in their, on their fields, consistent with the level of achievement that gets faculty into one of the national academies, or with the promise of being in a short period of time into the national, one of the national academies. We're especially interested in looking at faculty who can draw the interest of other faculty and students from disciplines that may be different from their own, whether or not the faculty we're hiring officially has a joint appointment or not. Said differently, we really are seeking individuals that will be transformative. The details of this program will be forthcoming, but I do want to encourage all of members of our community to discuss with their deans, potential individuals that we might want to pursue, and to work with their deans to develop a plan for attracting those individuals to Northeastern. While we say that the faculty are the backbone of the university, it's clearly the students that are the lifeblood of the university. And we have, as has been mentioned several times before, great success in attracting outstanding students. Co-op, clearly our signature program, is the most often cited reason that faculty, that students give for applying to and enrolling at Northeastern. And we've been doing co-op for 100 years, but as the president pointed out, we don't rest on our laurels. We constantly are evolving our programs. And we talked about the changing global nature of co-op with the establishment of international co-ops and the creation of the four-year option in recognition that there's, was an increasing number of students that were applying to Northeastern with an interest of completing co-op, but doing so within a four-year timeframe. Because of these and other innovations, our students have a wide range of options. They can pursue an integrated classroom and experiential learning opportunity on our Boston campus and for some of our programs online across the United States and around the globe. They can also pursue study abroad in programs and engage in research projects and service learning and more. And by combining majors and minors and integrating these with international experiences and civic engagement, our most entrepreneurial students can create custom-made programs that are aligned thematically with their own interests and aspirations. To me, it's these students, the ones who create individualized, custom-made, global experiential learning programs, who really experience the true Northeastern advantage. But unfortunately, for many reasons, not all of our students are able to experience the Northeastern advantage. So even though, by all measures, and you've heard some of them today, we've achieved unprecedented success and our undergraduate programs have tremendous strength, and our growing in popularity, witnessed a large number of students that are applying to come here, is incumbent upon us to undertake a comprehensive review of our undergraduate curriculum in order to make it possible for all our students to experience the Northeastern advantage. I therefore asked our Vice Provost for Undergraduate Education, Bruce Rankin, to lead a year-long university-wide conversation about how we might change our undergraduate programs to make it possible for all of our undergraduates to experience the Northeastern advantage. The conversation clearly is going to involve many, many discussions with the faculty. It's the faculty who develop the curriculum, but it should also involve other stakeholders, the students, the alumni, and even our co-op employers. We should also invite international thought leaders in innovative education and learning to the campus to be part of this discussion and to help stimulate our thinking. And part of this discussion, I think, needs to focus on, as the president says, what distinguishes a Northeastern graduate from graduates of other universities? The president mentioned that graduates of Northeastern are confident and prepared to take on the increasing challenges facing humanity. They're multifaceted, they're nimble, they're ready and able to engage a world where change is a constant. They have a global perspective, they're entrepreneurial. And in my mind, our graduates are on the path of becoming tomorrow's leaders in our fast-paced knowledge economy. Is this an accurate characterization of our graduates? Is it enough? Should there be other characteristics? Let's also use this opportunity to evaluate our co-op and international studies infrastructure and our advising system in order to determine if they provide our students with the guidance that they need to realize the Northeastern advantage. Some other issues that I hope we can consider during this year-long conversation are curricula flexibility. Are our curricula flexible enough to provide our students with the opportunity to realize the Northeastern advantage? Or are we straitjacketing our students with unnecessarily constrained programs? What role can online and hybrid courses play in providing curricula flexibility? What opportunities do advances in technology provide us to remove the constraints of space and time on how we deliver education? And as an aside, we should not let accrediting agencies prevent us from achieving what we consider to be the best curricula possible. When we're done, I'm also hopeful that we can create a document that articulates our vision for the future of undergraduate education at Northeastern, a vision that demonstrates our continued leadership in global experiential learning and can also be used as a blueprint for others to follow. As the president mentioned, when we travel around the world, and in this country as well, there's a large number of universities, increasingly large number of universities that are interested in co-op education, but they really don't have a clue as to how it really needs to be done. In the coming weeks, you're going to hear more about this initiative. There'll be many, many discussions, and I really truly urge all of you to participate. We're much better as an institution when all members of our community are engaged in discussions like this. This is going to be another exciting year at Northeastern University. I look forward to working with all of you to continue our march forward, and now I'd like to turn it back to the president.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Before I conclude, I would like to recognize some of our colleagues who are shifting their focus in the university. Let me start with Jack McCarthy. Jack has decided to retire from this current position, and he will be consulting for us in the second semester, which means that he will do work even more, if it's possible to work even more than Jack. So, Jack, thank you for the magnificent work you have done here. Stand, stand and be recognized. Thank you. I'll make later some announcements about the replacements, so, you know, you can ask yourselves all kinds of questions, but also I would like to recognize Emily, where is Emily? Emily Spiller, who is concluding a long tenure and very successful tenure as dean. And we want you, Emily, to stay here and continue to impact the whole place. Emily also is, was one of the pioneers of this interdisciplinary hire. And as you know, in law schools, this is not something that comes naturally because we have two different systems, semester order, but she went beyond that and she said, you know, there are new domains, new opportunities, and that's what I want to launch and to pioneer. So thank you again. I mentioned that David Luzzi is going to transition and be in charge of, you can stand, I mean, you can show your tie, your nice tie, and be in charge also of the security initiative, and he will work with Mel on that. I mentioned before, earlier in other gatherings, but let me remind you that also Steve Zolath, Steve, you can, we can do it twice, is also going to work with Mel Bernstein and the Provost on the health initiative, but, and also to look at opportunities that we have in terms of having a presence online, onsite, in various parts of the country. I also want to remind you that we will be honoring the memory of Tom Moore. You will receive a notice. I hope that you will be there. Tom has impacted the university in a tremendous way, and his legacy will be with us for many years. I chose to honor, you know, some of our colleagues who are transitioning because if you notice, also many of them have decided to remain here and to stay here and to work with, on behalf of the community, on new ventures or new opportunities. And at the same time, this is something that I want you to keep in mind. No one, no one is expected to do one thing for our community. Your job description. Your job description and my job description is the whole university. So the university, the community, may need us to do things beyond our job description, beyond what we were asked to do. You are doing it constantly, beyond the call of duty. You know, Jack Malone, I called Jack and I said, "Jack, thank you, because you had this family, and this is not part of your job description." But it's not Jack only, it's many, many of you. And I want to thank you for that. You are going beyond the call of duty. You are going beyond the job description. You are working for this university, for this community. And frankly, that characterizes everything we have been doing. Our great success, to go back to what Lou said, our great success is with us. But our great success didn't start five years ago, or 10 years ago, 15 years ago. It started in 1898. And our job is very simple. Our responsibility is very simple. We have to work for the present, and we have to prepare for the future, so that our successors, the students, the faculty, the administrators, they all are getting and working with a university that is ever-growing and ever-innovating. Thank you, thank you, and thank you. We have time for questions, and please, who would like to start? Usually, it takes 15 seconds. Yes, identify yourself, come to the microphone, say what your field is.
How's it going? My name's Greg Kerr. I'm a fourth-year here at Northeastern. You probably don't remember me, but we did meet in your office my freshman year to discuss the drug and alcohol policy here.
Yes. Greg, why do you think I don't remember you? You think that my memory is fading?
I was only a freshman, but despite some good things that have happened in the few years, I am disappointed that despite the tremendous advancement in the Massachusetts law on marijuana, there hasn't been much advancement in the school policy. And my question for you is, given the tremendous caliber of students that this university is attracting, do you think it's appropriate to give those students more responsibility to make their own decisions?
First of all, you know, the answer to your question about responsibility is yes. We, you know, we want our students to have more responsibility. But responsibility is not one way only, as you know. Responsibility is multiple ways. What do I mean by that? We have a responsibility towards the community, and the community, and we have responsibilities toward, towards other parts of the surrounding, of this great urban setting. For instance, as you know, John Tobin and many of you have been involved with the community. The community has expectations about us, too. We don't live in an ivory tower. We don't live in a tower, period. So whatever we do has to be embedded in the community, and has also to meet some of the expectations of the community, and also enrich this community. So my answer to your question is, it's not a one-way situation. Yes, for responsibility for the students, absolutely. And yes, for the fact that we are not isolated. Yes, please. Social media question. Who is taking the social media questions? Mr. President. So let our president talk. He wants my job. I gladly give you my job. Okay, then go ahead.
We can swap. How are you? Good afternoon, everybody. We have a question from Twitter, from a student. He asks, "Why are we building more dorms and not expanding classroom space and public use space, such as Curry and Snell, et cetera?"
Yes. As you know, every question presupposes an answer. And this is a question that says, you know, "Why are we building dorms instead of classrooms?" Actually, we're doing everything. Dorms, we, you know, research buildings. As you know, we are going to have a new building in Burlington, a research building on security in Burlington. We're going to have the Forsyth Institute, and this will allow us actually to expand the classrooms here. That's exactly what we want to do. We want to do it all. Absolutely. Any other question, Mr. President, do you have that you wanted? And then we'll go to you.
We have a question from Facebook. "Why are there so few co-ops outside of the Boston area? Northeastern needs to work on making more connections and do more to assist students who are on co-op outside of the Boston area, and how can we support them better?"
Actually, this is a great question, because, you know, we have at least a third of our co-ops are outside Boston. Is it enough for me? No. No. I want to really, all our students, to get out of this, of our area. Our area is great, but the world is too interesting to ignore. So this is why, if you recall, a year ago, we moved all our presidential scholarships to focus on the global scholarships. We constantly are adding to our co-op treasure worldwide and nationwide. So, and if now the specific student, I would like to ask the specific student to meet with the co-op office to see, you know, what her needs are or his needs are, I don't know. But we will work with them. So a third of what we, of our co-ops are outside the region, and what I would like to do is continue to increase that. And as a matter of fact, this is a metrics that we evaluate ourselves by.
Thank you. Hello, President. My name is Kevin Apogee-Mpia. I'm a fourth-year political science student at Northeastern. And I was listening to you.
Why are you wearing this hat? No, that's fine. I believe in academic freedom, Kevin. That's okay.
I get a lot of, a lot of heat for in Boston. So my question, I guess, I listened to you talk about innovation and big ideas, and my question relates to a big idea of diversity on campus and student diversity on campus. And I was doing research about diversity, and I found that Northeastern this past year recruited about almost 17% international students, and about 8% African-American students. And as a whole, the population of African-American students is less than 4%, but the, the population of international students makes about 10%. So it seems a bit that there's not as much of a commitment to racial diversity in bringing in students, at least domestically, from minority populations. So what are we going to do as a big idea, as a campaign, to increase racial diversity on campus?
Okay, first of all, it's a great question. And let me mention something. I don't want to create a parallelism between international students and students of color. You know, we're a diverse community. But if you look at the students of color only, we increased our students of color by 17%. And tomorrow, you all are going to receive a booklet here. And this booklet, it will detail the achievements of the community over the last five years, and it will give you the breakdown. And if you need further questions and further answers, please feel free to raise that. So my answer is that, no, we have increased, 17% increase in the students of color. And we have a commitment to be a diverse community, and this is important to us. Now, the question is, what can we do to continue to further that? And frankly, you know that, and I know that. And when I talk to the students, they tell me, "I came here because I have a community here." You know, for instance, let me commend the John D. O'Brien Institute, and also the director, who is here standing. And that, you know, that's a great community. And our centers are creating great communities. And you have a role in being an ambassador there, and I'm sure you're doing that. So I want to make it clear that our commitment is there, the progress is there, and we continue to do it. Please.
I agree that the people come here looking for community, but it seems, at least in the students I've talked to, and also myself, that there is a, there is a Northeastern community, and within that community, there's also subsidiary communities that we have on campus. And as an African-American student, it's hard when you're the only student in your class of about 24 or 25 that represents that community. We have a, the Northeastern pledge, in which students are supposed to feel as if they, they are Northeastern. They represent Northeastern, or Northeastern also represents them. But it's hard to feel a part of that community when you feel, or at least when you don't see people that look like you, who have also had similar experiences. And so I agree with us having a community. It's just, how is that community represented? And how can we feel that that community actually reflects what we look like and some of our experiences?
First of all, you know, you are a member of this community, you know, and you define the community. This is, as I mentioned to you, we have a commitment, we have been increasing the students of color. It's not going to stop. Is it, did we reach a steady state? Is it a perfect situation? And the answer is no. We still have to work together. But that's the way, work together. Hi.
My name's Julia Ebert, and I'm a second-year behavioral neuroscience student.
And I'm Brittany Hafner, I'm a third-year physics student. And we both really enjoy the opportunities that Northeastern offers us. However, we would like to bring up the issue of the NU shuffle. In my experience, I am currently switching to the BSMS Applied Physics and Electrical Engineering Program. And so far, I've been working at this since July, just to switch majors, which is basically within my department. I've already been sent to four different advisors, and I have to go through that entire cycle again, and then probably one more time to solidify my schedule.
So what do you want to switch from physics to what?
Physics to the bachelor's in applied physics, combined with a master's program in electrical engineering.
You see, Carrie Repapote is very happy. You see, look at her. She's saying, "Yes, yes, go for it, go for it." And my answer is, first of all, go for it. If there is a red tape, let me tell you what we do with red tape. Every time we see a red tape, and we want you to bring us a red tape, let us know about it, and, you know, what we have to do is get rid of it. It's as simple as that. So before you leave today, what I would like you to do is talk to Bruce Rankin. And Bruce, could you stand here? You don't leave without a plan to get this done by next week. As simple as that. Okay?
And, I mean, it's not just about switching majors either. It's about the whole communication issues between departments, and there's really no protocol when you have.
Good, good. That's a good point. That's a great point. So, you know, because what you are saying is not only my issue, is there something more symptomatic? And you're saying, you know, it's not clear how to navigate the system, and therefore we have to be more transparent. Absolutely, let's work on that. We need to work on that. That's what I meant by shifting from a faculty-centered curriculum, where we are deciding on everything, we the faculty, to a student-centered one. Absolutely.
As part of that, I'm in, part of an interdisciplinary major, and because my major is split over the Departments of Biology and the Department of Psychology, one of the issues that I've experienced especially is interdepartmental communication. I'm wondering what you think would.
Biology and what else?
Psychology.
And so what are the issues that you're facing?
It's the problems that sometimes it's difficult, because they're in separate departments, they don't necessarily know what's happening in the other department to help coordinate the schedules and work with students who are split over both of those departments.
Well, that's an important point, if there is no coordination. And we want to increase the number of students that are exploring different fields and have different majors, for a simple reason. I keep telling our students that by the time you leave Northeastern, half of what you know will be obsolete. And I keep telling them, "We don't know which half, otherwise we won't teach it." And therefore, you know, you are what we want to promote. And if you're saying that you are seeing red tape, we have to work on that. Absolutely. And that's the beauty of being in a, you know, in an environment that is growing in different directions, and clearly, the direction of interdisciplinarity is not happening at the faculty level only, but it's happening at the students' level, too. Absolutely.
Thank you.
So once again, please, talk to Bruce Rankin, and he will work with that. So let's go from, Carrie is giving you his phone number. That's good, Carrie. Yes.
Hello, my name is Juliana. I'm a second-year political science student, and I'm here with a group.
Yes.
Pretty distinct.
Yes.
I'd just like to thank you, first of all, for being here to speak to our community this afternoon. And it makes me proud as a Husky that we're at the forefront of our nation's universities in job placement, we have all these undergraduate applications, and that we have students on every continent. However, we're ashamed that the subcontracted workers on our campus are paid poverty-level wages, and they don't match up with the other Boston schools that we see ourselves as competing with. So with our custodial contract up for renegotiation this coming summer, many Northeastern students would like to know how you plan to address this disparity in the upcoming negotiations.
Great. Let me mention the strategy and what we are doing, and what we have been planning to do. First, as you know, last year, we retained a vendor. You know, that was the first issue for us, is to retain a vendor. We had opportunities to look at different vendors, and we zoomed on a vendor that provided us with the quality that we felt was needed here. The second thing is that this allows us to, the fact that we retained the same vendor allowed us also to keep the workers and not to lay off, because if we had to go to another vendor, we would have had to lay off, you know, the vendors, or they would have had to lay off the vendors, because they would have come with their new staff. The third aspect is that we want to readjust the wages. And the fourth aspect is that we have, we are going to launch a survey of the workers to see what their needs are, because we are a community that is very rich in terms of what it can offer. Classes, courses, English courses, et cetera. And we cannot decide, and you and I cannot decide, what the needs are. So that will be another aspect. We're launching the survey. And finally, as you know, three members of the senior team have been working with also the various constituencies, including yours, to work on these issues. So absolutely. Thank you.